Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us. This is Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. Those of you joining us from home, welcome. We have two council members joining us remotely today. And just one quick housekeeping item, the last section of the agenda, other department discussions. We have items one, two, and three that are marked for discussion. Number one, we're going to move to the end. Okay. Well, with that, we will begin under presentations. We have a presentation of the Lynn County Patch Program by Tracy Akenbach. Tracy, are you with us?
I am here, man. Thank you.
Welcome.
Um, so Tom had asked if I would want to just briefly, very briefly, because I saw your list of items to cover today. Yikes. Just a little bit about the patch program. So this program was a result of a few of us talking about a concern for homeowners in our, in our county as a result of the August 10th derecho. And so some of us started to meet and talk about what we could do. Renters were being directed to call Waypoint, and Waypoint was trying to direct them to the right places, but we were concerned about homeowners. So that kind of resulted in the PAC program, which stands for Providing Assistance to Community Homeowners. Um, we're actually, this is a great week to be bringing this up to you because it rolls out this week, I think. We finally problem solved with FEMA a little bit, and it, it sounds like we are planning to send out the press release on Thursday and hopefully have the program live on Friday. Homeowners will be able to, so it's a collaboration of many entities. In the news release, actually, the City of Marion is represented. I have listed them in the, in the news release, as well as the City of Cedar Rapids and a lot of organizations that have been part of this because Tom, Trey Hahn, from the City of Marion, has been participating in some of these meetings, just trying to stay informed about, about what, what can happen for homeowners. So really, what we're, we were fortunate enough to, the Housing Fund for Lynn County has been provided some funding from the United Way and from the Greater Cedar Rapids Community Foundation. And that funding is helping to pay for a position, to, to be an intake person, a coordinator, to process requests from homeowners. And then what we're hoping to do is either be able to direct them if they need help with construction management, they just don't know how to work through the process with, with contractors or how to find one or things like that. That's one thing. And then the other side of it is financial. So what we're hoping to do is utilize some of these funds that we're being given. The Neighborhood Finance Corporation is going to do this for all of Lynn County. Homeowners would be able to get access to funds to help maybe pay in advance of getting their FEMA money and their insurance money. And then also be able to have forgiven if there's a gap. So like the deductible amount, or if the work requires more than what's going to be covered with other money. We are able to help people up to 15,000. We are limiting. I see on the sheet that I provided, the income limits are shown there. So we are limiting it. In the beginning, we're limiting it to people with low to moderate income. So we have no idea how it's going to roll, how, you know, what kind of a response we'll get, but we're, we are guessing it will be a, it will be a popular program with people. But again, that, the news release will be released on Thursday and hopefully be live on Friday.
Okay. Well, thank you. I think this is a great, a great project. I see that this is a collaboration of organizations that participate in LAPAID. Would you mind just explaining to those who don't know what LAPAID is real quick? Because I think that's a group that serves a very important purpose and has during this entire year. And I'm not sure that everyone is aware of what LAPAID is.
Well, LAPAID is a, is a group of organizations. It's a huge group. It's, golly, I'm thinking there's maybe sometimes on the calls, there might be 70 different organizations represented. And the whole intent is to try and respond to disasters, to try and to coordinate and identify the needs. And actually, out of those calls, that was one of the, you know, one of the early ones, we were already, we had met all year in response to COVID and had kind of gone to deciding, okay, maybe we only need to meet once a month or, you know, and then, and then derecho hit, and then that changed again. We went back to, to meeting all the time. But this is really a result of that disaster group that, that is formed in the county. And I don't have the history, but I'm going to guess it was probably formed as a result of the 2008 flood. And then stayed intact and, and is, how do I want to say, is started back up again when a disaster hits and, and a response is needed.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that explanation. I just think it's everyone, it's important for everyone to know that, that, that group exists. It's a collaboration of all types of human services organizations, government organizations, and their purpose is to coordinate response to disasters. And I know I've been on a number of the calls throughout the year and appreciate all the work you do. We'll open it up for questions from the council. For Tracy? Yes, go ahead, Will. Tracy, do, do mobile homes qualify for this?
Oh, I was afraid I would get this question. So one of the thing is that the group decided with these loan funds that we are not making them, we are, well, mobile homes are eligible if they, if they're taxed as real estate. But one of the things that we have decided to do, we just had this discussion on a call yesterday, the collaborative group, is that I want to be able to collect data on the people who need help from the mobile homes. And then we may look for other sources of funding to be able to meet those needs. As you probably know, the mobile home issue can sometimes be a difficult one to solve. But we're, but we are going to, as far as the loan, the forgivable loan program for this, we are not, mobile homes that are, that are not taxed as real estate won't be eligible. But we are going to, and have received calls already from people who live in mobile home parks, just so that we have a better idea of what the need is and how we might be able to solve it. Like I'm thinking maybe with some funders, if we know the numbers, we might be able to come up with a solution.
Okay. That's a good question, because I might, I would bet that that's going to be a large part of any need for help in Marion would be mobile home.
Yeah, I know there are a lot, there's a lot of need in the mobile home parks right now with, with folks that just can't afford even just skirting around their home. They can't afford to fix the skirting, which is insulation in the winter. So it could affect the pipes freezing in a mobile home, so.
Right. Well, and, and we do have, you know, a portion of this that earlier was Matthew 25 was, was, you know, trying to help people who were, had emergency needs, and that would certainly qualify as one of those things. We have also talked about in our collaborative group about volunteer organizations who would maybe be willing to problem solve some of those things to help mobile homeowners.
Tom, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that, you know, I've been in close communications with Marion Village and a little bit with Squaw Creek, but not real close with them. But speaking right now, I speak on behalf of Marion Cares. I'm the president of Marion Cares this year. And I, at our staff meeting, our board meeting last week, I think it was, we, we had helped, Marion Cares had helped, I think, almost 50 mobile home owners or renters or owners, it would be owners, to put the skirting back around. So Marion Cares has been really, really diving into both Marion Village and Squaw Creek over the last few months to respond to some of the needs that are, it's just difficult to fit, fit a mobile home into the housing assistance programs that exist. So I know the Methodist Church has also been extremely supportive of both mobile home parks as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Tom. Anyone else have questions for Tracy? Well, it looks like that we are tied in pretty well into this group and their, and their work with Tom, Tom's involvement. And hopefully we'll see a good progress for our community through this, through this program. Thank you so much, Tracy.
Thank you.
And let us know if there's anything else that we can do to, to help or help you get the word out.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Moving on with the consent agenda, no items on page one, on the first page are marked, or the second page. Any, any of those items in particular people would like to discuss? All right, on the top of the third page of item B2 is marked for discussion. Resolution approving affidavit with Cedar Rapids Lynn County Solid Waste Agency for the curbside recycling program incentive. Mr. Miller?
Your Honor and counsel, thank you. This is more of a FYI and leading into budget, wanted to give the council a kind of a heads up on this. This is an annual program that was offered, or that is offered by the Solid Waste Agency. It's an incentive to maintain curbside recycling for the City of Marion. When the recycling market started to go sideways, it became very difficult financially to justify curbside recycling collections. So by executing this resolution, which staff is recommending, we will receive this incentive, just over $66,000. However, the staff at the Solid Waste Agency has indicated this will be the last year for this program. So that will have a budgetary effect on solid waste fees. With that, we are, we are anticipating to see another increase in tipping fees for recycling. So there's more, again, more of an FYI to the council as we go into the budget season.
Okay, so there won't be any action on this?
No action. We'll prove it, recommending approval, and then obviously we'll, we'll receive those revenues.
So there will be an action item on Thursday to recommend approval of the affidavit?
Yep.
And then, okay. Any questions? Yes, go ahead. Grant?
Yeah. Ryan, is there, do you foresee there will be any point in the future that the recycling market will recover itself?
No. Not, not, not how it exists, because most of the recycling market was built around paper. And that's not there anymore. You're not building a lot of paper mills anymore. So a lot of the, the valuable recycling, like newsprint, everything, that's, that's going away. So you'll never see the same recycling market again. Now, it could change, and the type of recycling materials may change, how we collect it, how we sort it, things. But the way it is right now, no, it will never.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Other questions for Ryan? Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Thank you, sir.
So remainder of that page is not marked for, for discussion. Is there anything on that page or the following? Following two pages. So under engineering, nothing is marked. Under community development, nothing is marked until F7. Anything prior to F7 under community development that any council member would like to discuss? Okay, moving on to F7 under community development.
This is a pretty straightforward item. I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the city council. Usually, when we're talking about the annexation of such a large parcel of ground, we, we like to highlight it. So this is out east of town, north of the Marion Airport, and includes the property east of Squaw Creek Village Mobile Home Park. And the property directly adjacent to this, while it is farm field, is, is actually annexed into the city. It's the old Dostal Farm. And some of the properties owned by the city, some by the water department. And the developers have purchased that, and then they've, they've actually reached down now and acquired the property all the way down to 151. So you can see they've attached all the documentation regarding the annexation. We'll be processing this. We've seen some concepts for redevelopment out here in the past, and it's pretty exciting. We've got a mix of uses that's been talked about. You can see there's a large lowland area in the center, which, which I really foresee that being a regional detention basin to kind of serve that whole area. So this will be an exciting project as we move into the new year and anticipate rezonings and plating and such come spring. So any questions on it? It's just receive and file. So you'll, there'll be a lot more to come on those, but.
Questions for Tom? Yes, go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, Tom, so is there any, any notion of the type of future developed, development that would go in there, or is it just more general at this point?
Well, at this point, it's really general, but we did see some concepts some time ago on it. Really, what I, what I'd see is some commercial along 151. And then as you go further north, you're going to find it to be a mix of residential uses, similar, similar to what you're seeing out in that area, I think. So I do see there's going to be a school site, north of here, and currently in the city is designated a school site. And there's some parkland as well. I don't think I mentioned that before. And there's a location for proposed water tower. So I do see us moving into kind of a a nice planning process as we go through the redevelopment of this area. So I think there'll be a lot of public conversations about it. Thank you.
Other questions for Tom?
Oh, go ahead, Will. Sorry. Does the height restrictions from the airport affect this property at all?
So along the east boundary, you will have a little bit of the approach zone. And I believe there's some multifamily housing restrictions in that area. When we were talking about this some time ago, I think there was a, at the time, they were looking at being able to mitigate through land use planning. But it is an area that I think we'll probably want to take a look at without getting into all the details that it's, as you get that far out of the approach zone, it might be better that those uses would be identified as an additional review rather than just an outwardly no-go. So something we got to look at.
Any additional questions? Thank you, Tom. There's one item under library, which is not marked for discussion. If anyone would like to discuss that, please say so. Otherwise, we'll move on to the abstention consent agenda. Nothing is marked on that for discussion. Does anyone have anything in particular they want to discuss on that agenda? All right, moving on to the regular agenda under administrative services, we have item A1 is marked for discussion, a public hearing and conclusion of reverse referendum process for the general obligation disaster recovery loan agreement proposal. We have Amal here.
Good afternoon, Your Honor. On Thursday, we'll be holding a public hearing on an interim financing for disaster recovery expenses on, and not to exceed 40 million amount. A little update on the project, this is category A. And it's a contracted services for collection of debris, storm related. So far, this project is estimated at 34, 35, almost million in cost, broken into two, right-of-way collection and waterway collection. Our local share is expected to be a little over 5 million. What do we add on that? So far, we've been invoiced about 13 million to date. We've paid about almost 12 million out of cash we have on hand in capital projects on. So staff is recommending putting out a request for proposals on a line of credit on an amount not to exceed 25 million. Term is four-year, interest-only amortized over five years. City reserves the ability to reduce or terminate the facility in full or in part anytime. We applied for FEMA assistance and we're expecting to receive 85% of that. So far, we are at 55, 66.5 million in outstanding general obligation debt that would put us at 42% of our statutory debt limit. In front of you is a table showing a forecast assuming 3% growth, which is a little conservative here, that would put us at 157 million in statutory debt limit. Year over year, we're expecting CIP schedule to add about 3.5 million. If you'll, if we look at the 25 million, we're, we'll be committing to disaster recovery. Even though we're planning on drawing on as-needed basis, however, the full 25 will count towards our debt capacity. Looking at the impact on that, that would put us a little bit over our self-imposed limit. But we're still going to be or maintain being under 60% of our legal limit. Still conservative. So, so far, we've been working with our legal and bond council to draft an RFP. We're expecting to finalize this RFP soon, and we'll come back to council for action on our contract. Any question?
Okay, questions? Yeah, go ahead.
Amal, so what you're showing here is for all subsequent years after fiscal year 21 is the entire 25 million on the line of subject to statutory limit. Is that correct?
Yes. The term is four-year, and we're expecting to carry that over five years, just, just to give us some time. And we're, we're not planning on carrying it longer. We're expecting receipts from FEMA as soon as March.
Right. So given that, I'm assuming because we have a $25 million line of credit, the entire amount would have to be included in the subject to statutory limit line?
And only outstanding.
Only the outstanding?
Will count towards our debt service.
Okay, so again, I'm a little confused then, because we know that if the city's share is 5 million, a little over 5 million dollars, the rest of that will, should be reimbursed to the city within the next 12 months.
Yes.
Hopefully six months, if we're, if we're fortunate with FEMA. So given that scenario, why would we even be talking about or trying to show these kind of numbers beyond even fiscal year 22? So it seems like at that point in time, all we should be talking about, I could see during fiscal year 21, we've got the entire amount as we fund all of the expenses up to the $35 million estimated. But with, after that all gets paid off, the biggest challenge we have is how to fund the remaining $5 million. So I'm a little confused why we're trying to show these numbers clear out to all these subsequent years.
This is the worst-case scenario. We'll be reimbursed in increments. So we've broken category A into four different projects. So right now, we're requesting the total amount invoiced so far. So we'll be expecting the 8 million reimbursed in, so. But worst-case scenario, to show the impact on capacity, showing what if we were not, we are not planning on carrying 25.
Worst-case scenario, and the only way we hit the worst-case scenario is if FEMA and the state are not reimbursing the city as we expect.
Yes.
I mean, that is by far the worst case.
Yes.
Which?
Total project cost is 35 million.
Yep.
So this is only 25.
Okay. Yeah, you're, you're portraying an extreme, extreme worst case, which I can't even see a 1% chance of happening. So.
Yes, so far, numbers, numbers are looking better. Right-of-way collection came a little under what we had originally estimated. Hopefully, waterways will come under as well.
Okay.
And is there any progress on the bill that you've mentioned the last time that would have them, have them cover 90%?
Yes, I think last time we heard the bill pass the House, and it's at the Senate floor right now. Hopefully, if it passes, we don't have to worry about the 5 million of the share.
Questions? Yes, go ahead, Will. Grant?
Well, I'm feeling good about myself, Will.
Excuse me. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, thank you. So let me see if I can summarize this, and I'm, I'm somewhat skewed by the materials provided for work session. The total principal we're seeking to be able to access is $40 million in this line of credit. We're only going to immediately draw upon 25 million of it, leaving 15 in reserve. That's grant speak. Is, is that the, the right way to interpret this?
You actually have statutory authority after the hearing to do a line of credit up to 40 million? We're recommending that this initial one be 25. So you're not, we're not planning at this point on having to tap into the other 15 million of capacity, but the city has already established that you have legal authority should we need it. When we put that number together, we hadn't yet received the bids for the waterways, which came in substantially lower than we expected. So it's just a matter of us getting honed in more on costs and understanding better when bills might be coming in and what we're actually going to need for cash flow. But in looking at what we actually would need, we wouldn't even anticipate unless FEMA is extremely slow that we would hit the 25 million point.
So the actual line of credit is 25 million?
Correct.
Okay.
But you have statutory authority, you are correct, that we could go to 40. We would just do a second note for the other 15 in the unlikely eventuality that we needed it.
Okay, so there's a little difference in terms of the plan of attack now that you realize versus what's, what's delineated in the agenda memo?
Correct. Just after, once it's published in the paper, the city council, that's the number that gets put out for the public hearing.
Okay. Got it. And just so, just so that we're all together on this, from the time work is completed in the field to the, how much time is there until we submit those costs to FEMA and then they reimburse them? What's that kind of general timeline we expect?
If we submit everything that FEMA needs for review, we'll be expecting reimbursement within 120 days.
Okay.
We're still working on the data for our project. We're, I think we're close to submitting the project. So a week will have completed data.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Amal? Renee Colette, do you have any questions?
No, thanks.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. The rest of the items under administrative services are not marked for discussion. Are there any items that any council member would like to discuss in particular? Now we'll move on to engineering, uh, also no items are marked for discussion. Any items there to discuss? Okay, moving on to community development. F one is not marked. Anyone that wanna discuss that item? Move on to F two, public hearing regarding a request to amend. Um, table six. And table seven regarding permitted uses with the business, regional and office services zoning districts.
So as, uh, as the staff report indicated, the, the city, when we, uh, have been going through the rezoning and, uh, uh, maps, we've, we've heard from different groups of folks in different industries regarding uh, the actual ordinances relative to, well, if I'm zoned with this district in the future, then these uses are something that we should be afforded. So there's been a lot of conversations about um, the actual zoning ordinance when we're talking about the maps, because really until the map becomes the zoning map, the ordinance really don't get looked at. So when we rezoned and created all those new districts, we put out all the public notices, we try to collect and get information, but until you tell somebody their property is gonna be rezoned from X to Y, they really don't really look at it. Now, the Bajoronson family owns quite a bit of property around the community. They have been looking at our ordinances and, and walking through their land and they've made some, they made a request um, to amend the ordinances. And, you know, honestly, and, and you're gonna hear me say this as we go through, and I think if you went back to when we adopted the ordinances, I said it as well. We weren't gonna get this one hundred percent correct the first go around. We're trying to talk about every use imaginable, putting it into code. So, uh, the Bajoronson family has brought forward a request to make some amendments to our ordinances. Um, we did agree with some of them and have, have made those changes, uh, and, and edited the code. I know you received a very large thirty-five page document that outlined the changes, but really it comes down to providing for some, uh, multi-family assisted living, nursing home, uh, more, uh, group home type uses in some of the office service, uh, district as well as the business, regional business district. You know, when you're sitting at a table and you're talking about it, it doesn't seem like those would be great fits, regional business district, which is like along a four-lane highway or a nursing home or assisted living. However, if you think about when you drive around, you know, one of the, the newer market rate ones is right on one hundred. Um, a lot of the nursing homes are along, uh, uh, four-lane divided roadways, Blair's Ferry Road in particular. Uh, you see a lot of hospice in those areas as well. So we did take a look at that and understanding kind of the situation that exists, we, we did agree and have, uh, proposed to make those tweaks within our, within our code. And, uh, honestly, I, I think they'll be good ones. Um, and we're, we're fully supportive of them. The planning commission reviewed it and also has fully supported that. I think Mr. Jensen was at that meeting, I believe, when we were talking about it. Um, and then we did also include in this amendment because we uh, did leave it out of our tables, which is somewhat embarrassing, I have to say, is, uh, we had listed grocery stores and neighborhood grocery stores as uses, but we did not permit them in any district whatsoever. So, uh, we thought it would be good to clean up our tables as we bring those forward as well. Um, I wasn't gonna walk through all of this, you guys have got the information and I, and I think it's pretty well laid out where the amendments were being proposed. I didn't know if you had any specific questions, but staff is comfortable and the camp, planning commission supported the amendments as being, as identified.
Questions, go ahead, Steve.
Uh, just a comment, uh, if you really look at what's driving a lot of these changes, yeah, a lot of it is what might have been logical or made sense even two years ago for some of these districts. If we had done this two years ago, some of these might not have been in there. But if you look at where we are at today with the office space need and demand and future expectation, I think a lot of the entire market area, the market re- arena for these two areas for B R and O S, uh, have completely changed just in the last year in, in twenty twenty. So, you know, given that, I sat in on the meeting, listened to it, looked at the changes. Uh, again, I think they make a lot of sense. I think the requests they have are logical. Uh, and P N Z supported it, Tom and the staff did too. So I think that's one of the main drivers from the reason all of a sudden, I think we're talking about some of these changes. Whereas if we did this one or two years ago, we may not be talking about these and we'd be talking about change that's coming about. So I think it's all happening at the right time for the right reason.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Grant.
Yeah, you, so, uh, dovetailing into what Steve just commented on in terms of the, I would call it a change of expectation from two years ago, uh, what the market is really looking to. I would, I would, uh, venture to say we look forward two or three years, we're also gonna see, um, some drive to have further amendments to what we are permitting. And in fact, there may be some things that would be contemplated that we're not even thinking of right now. Um, so I, I hope what we retain in our total system of, uh, governance over our, our, um, our, our zoning, uh, practices is the ability to retain that, uh, ability to evolve with what the market does without it being prejudicial to landowners. Um, i- if you catch what I'm trying to say there.
Absolutely.
Um, I, I, and I, the second thing I would just say is I, I compliment, uh, the, uh, revision, uh, balloons on the table with some, uh, commentary to help, uh, focus the review of it. I thank so much, that's helpful.
Dave does a very nice job in preparing the staff reports, I gotta give him credit.
Oh, yeah.
Other questions? Okay, F four, Tom?
Rachel, is there a, is there an illustration on the? So on Thursday, there'll be a public hearing regarding the request to rezone, uh, property and also amend the conference of plan um, as indicated in the agenda, to provide the opportunity for a multi-family, uh, development uh, on the site of the, uh, existing, can you say existing now, Y M C A?
Still there.
It's still there. So the existing Y M C A, uh, uh, building uh, on the corner of thirty-first and tenth Ave, uh, the, the, the property is currently set up for a quasi-government facility. So, um, you know, the, the zoning and the land use are really not in line. Um, so the proposed changes do, uh, come in line with providing the opportunity for multi-family develop. Um, you know, multi-family development, uh, is, uh, a transitional use, it can be used between commercial, high-density residential and single-family. And I think this is a, a great example of being able to provide for some infill redevelopment. Uh, the density is higher than it is to the west and higher than it is to the north. But I believe that the way the design is being proposed, it transitions well to all of the adjacent properties. It, it even does provide some green space behind the building that I think is, uh, you can see in the illustration here, um, is, is substantial. Uh, when you're considering adding a hundred and forty-seven units to the site, you do wanna have some green space and, and they are affording for that. So on Thursday, there'll be the public hearing and the rezoning and the conference of plan amendment. And then also a discussion regarding the preliminary site development plan. Uh, staff laid out a pretty, uh, lengthy staff report regarding this. There's been a lot of conversations back and forth. I wasn't planning to walk through all of the review, uh, processes that we went through. Uh, one of the things that we've changed, and I hope you had the opportunity to see it in the staff report, is we're really relating our proposed changes back to our comp plan. In the past, I don't think we were great at that and we really changed that and the staff report lays out what the goals of the residential districts are and really provides us an ability to uh, compare what's being proposed to those goals and really, uh, supports that. So I think, uh, confidently, staff is supportive, I think the commission was supportive as well and, uh, look forward to seeing this, uh, project come forward. Uh, I think the public hearing on Thursday. I'm a little concerned, um, that we didn't get a lot of public comment at Plating Commission. Um, and there's a really diverse community around this area. There's, uh, some senior housing. Uh, what I would consider senior housing is a lot of condos to the north. And, uh, there was a petition filed, I think fifty residents signed a petition against this. Um, so I don't know if we're gonna get a lot of su- uh, conversation from the Zoom meeting. But, uh, you know, we, we received the petition, but we haven't received much correspondence outside of that. Um, and I think I, I really don't know how to resolve that issue, to be honest with you. But, um, from a staff perspective and planning commission perspective, certainly a support for the project, so. We'll see what happens on Thursday, but.
Okay, I'm gonna let Mayor Pro Tem handle the discussion on this.
Yeah, I think I, again, I sat in on that P N Z meeting and it was a three-hour meeting that night, so it was really long for you guys. But I think what I'd, what I would ask you to do to resolve some of those petition issues and questions is, when I looked at it again this morning, you know, they kinda cited four areas or four areas of concern, and if we could address those when we have the public hearing on Thursday. One was, uh, water runoff issues in the area, water pressure, traffic issue and noise issue.
Yep.
So, and again, I've heard different comments and aspects about that. So I think if we address those as part of our public hearing, uh, I mean, the one petition that had fifty signatures, they just went and got everybody's signature on Sunburst Avenue from thirty-first Street clear down to thirty-fifth Street. I mean, they just went, took the entire street, even though some of those places are, you know, four blocks away. Uh, that's fine, I understand that. But if I looked at what was underlying, you know, those are the four issues of all of the, uh, petitions that I think we need to talk about during the public hearing. Um, the, the one aspect, we're, we're talking about the public hearing, but we're really gonna be also talking about the site development, that's not marked for discussion. The one aspect of that, that I would like to have discussed, or I will have discussed when we talked about the site development plan, and that is, for this entire development, there are two driveways out of this. And both of them enter on thirty-first Street. Uh, I'm surprised I did not hear any discussion when traffic was being talked about, about can this be modified or adjusted so that you have one on thirty-first and maybe one coming off of Tenth Avenue?
Yeah.
I think that can be done relatively easy by just kinda shoving everything down and moving, uh, a little bit of the buildings, uh, without changing, uh, the number of units. Uh, to me, this, this project has good setbacks from the street, uh, more than normal. A lot of green space on the northeast corner, so, uh, again, I think there's some really good things about it, but I think there's those four areas, if we can address those, comment on those, so that everybody that had those petitions uh, understands how those are being taken care of.
We can do that.
I think that will, people who are listening in, I don't know how many will be listening in Thursday. Hopefully there'll be quite a few more listening in, uh, so we don't know what to expect. But if we take care of those right up front, maybe that'll address some of their concerns.
I believe from a, the planning commission meeting, there was also a concern with regard to traffic and a desire to have some traffic study done.
Right.
I can, uh, check with Mike, I know he's on the call, but, um, between now and Thursday and also get an update on that situation as well. I know that just immediately following that meeting, we already figured we better get that accomplished. So, uh, we did reach out and ask them to provide some traffic information as well. So I'll get an update on that as well.
And there's a little traffic information in one of the pages that is part of the packet here.
Yeah.
I mean, Dave provided an extensive amount of information uh, on this project. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of stuff here to, you gotta, you gotta go through it a couple of times to really uh, I think, understand what is all here, what's going on, how they're doing it. And we'll talk about that, more of that obviously on Thursday. So before we move on, Grant, question?
Yeah, were there any dissenters, uh, on the Planning and Zoning Commission for the, regarding this project?
You know, that was a long meeting.
I don't think there were any.
Okay.
I don't recall any.
That, that's fine.
Yeah, double check on that, Tom, but.
Yeah, I will definitely.
I think it was unanimous if I recall.
Yeah.
So I, I do agree, uh, with Steve's assessment of the principal themes that the, uh, that the, uh, neighborhood residents, uh, were concerned about. There was one other one that I think was brought out in an individual letter uh, by a retired couple was, um, the possibility, the potential of instead of having three buildings, moving it down, downgrading it to two. And I don't know that that, you know, from a construction standpoint, site development standpoint, I don't know if that's logical or not. I'm just wondering, as we examine the other base level concerns that the, the respondents had, uh, if that's something that should also be factored into the overall evaluation as this gets finalized. Cause I, I think their, their concern, if I read the letter right, uh, was a hundred and forty-seven units. That's a, that's a, that's a sizable number of people and hence drives the traffic volumes, et cetera. What if it is just, uh, downgraded a bit in terms of total, uh, site occupancy?
Yeah, I, I do know that, that the developers are trying to create that happy medium between uh, cost effectiveness and return on investment and such, uh, but I, I can ask the question certainly.
Well, I, if I should just, just to footnote my comment, uh, I, I think maybe another review of the, the comments that were received and how perverse, how pervasive that theme is of reducing the footprint of the total, uh, construction. I- if, if that warrants any treatment, I guess I just wanna make sure we've touched that stone, I'm here, okay?
Hey, Renee Colette, do you have any comments or questions before we move on?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I'm good too, thank you.
All right, so yeah, this will have, I'm sure, a lot more discussion on Thursday. All right, we'll move the meeting back to mayor.
Okay, so that should cover through F seven, right, Tom? And then, um, next item is F eight.
So, so F eight is the, the long-awaited first phase of rezoning the community, and this is addressing Ward Two. Um, and the, I, I hope everybody got a chance to get your hard copies. We got larger copy, so you could take a look at the differences. Um, in all fairness, we started with this district primarily because it was the easy district. Um, it's primarily residential, there weren't a lot of changes. Um, there may be some non-conforming structures created here and there, but it's primarily due to some setbacks, but we're also cleaning up some setbacks. So it's really hard to make everything fit into this perfect little, um, box and, and appease everybody. I think in this area, we have done probably the best job we could to, to do that. Um, and, uh, we've, we've not had a lot of input or, uh, uh, I shouldn't say input, we had, we've had input, but we haven't had a lot of, uh, folks contact us about changes or, or questions or comments related to the proposed rezoning. In this day and age, it is very difficult to get public comment on something as massive as this. Usually it's easier if you're talking about one specific parcel and you can notify the adjacent property owners. To be honest, we obviously did not send a notice to every property owner or every parcel owner as this relates. Uh, we did reach out to. We did reach out to the Marion Times and tried to get some coverage on that. I have to be honest, I didn't see if it was covered or not in the, in the, in the. But we did, we did talk to the Marion Times about that.
For sure it was.
What was it? I didn't, I didn't happen to catch it or not. And so we're, we're hopeful that if there are folks that have questions or comments, they'll reach out to us and the public hearing on Thursday, they could provide some comments on that. So I didn't know if you had any specific questions. Is this, I mean, this, we could, I could go on and do a great deal of detail as it relates to this. But honestly, with the amount of residential that we're really touching, it really doesn't change a lot. As a matter of fact, it probably cleans up more of the traditional areas. I think I broached it before when we were setting the date that, you know, where the homes were located closer than twenty-five feet to the property line. And they treat neighborhoods that were built in that manner north of Tenth Avenue. If they get tore down, they have to maintain a twenty-five-foot setback, which requires them to be built behind the property or behind the front yard lines of most of the other homes. So I think we're cleaning up some of those neighborhoods in a much better fashion than we would, would have been if we saw redevelopment on its own, so. Any, any questions specifically to this?
Questions? So this will be on the agenda for approval?
Yes.
Any questions at this time?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Not a question, but a comment. Tom, I just, as I've become familiar with this, I remember going to one of the community meetings that was done, what, a year ago, October, something like that? When this was being primarily introduced. And I just applaud the hard work that you all have been making on this. And then to have it further complicated by breaking it down into wards just because we have to do it in bite-sized chunks, given our situation right now. I just want to say, this is, this is difficult work, getting a lot of comments, I am sure, from stakeholders. But again, thank you.
Appreciate that. And to that point, Dave and Nicole in the office have been very instrumental on this. I, I have to give them a lot of the credit in this regard. Yeah. One thing I believe, so it is a ordinance to adopt the map. So there'll be three readings of it too. So, you know, I would just ask that if this hits the press or we get more information in the public hearing, if there is the opportunity for folks to come forward afterwards, understanding that the public hearing is closed, if there's an opportunity to provide some leniency on public comment at those times, that'd be great. I think it's just one of those things that it's difficult to get the word out right now. So if there's the ability for folks to comment, that'd be great if they were allowed to do so at the second or third reading.
Any comments or questions for Tom on this item before we move on? Okay, that brings us to F ten through thirteen, which are not marked for discussion. Any of those items of particular concern to anyone?
We got the bridge in there.
I see that.
Good deal.
So we'll count on our representatives to the MPO to push for some funding there. Okay, if there are no comments on those, we'll move on to F fourteen, resolution approving a contract for appraisal services for the C-Mark Trail project.
So no, I don't remember fourteen and fifteen are contracts for appraisal services related to some of the property within the C-Mark Trail project, particularly south of one hundred. We obviously need to acquire some property down through there. And I just want to point out that we're, we're working through that process and, you know, we're, we're following the appropriate acquisition procedures. We're getting an appraisal and then a review appraisal for the properties. So those two contracts are on the agenda for approval, so.
Questions on those? Okay, F sixteen.
F sixteen. So as the council is well aware, we're moving forward with our Streetscape Design Services, RDG. I, I think staff behind me and those online would support that RDG's been doing a fantastic job with this and the committee members as well, their graphics. And a way to illustrate the Streetscape project has been fantastic and it really provides us a good picture of what's going on, I believe. If the council recalls, we started down the road of a conversation about the plaza at the same time as we did the Streetscape. And one of the things that came out of the discussion of the Streetscape was Eleventh Street north of Seventh Avenue. I think when we started this process several years ago and trying to decide what the scope of the Streetscape would be, Eleventh Street wasn't in the, what I would say, the, the, the entertainment district of Marion as it is now. And it was starting, but I think it's really become quite the area to be on a regular basis, both retail and nightlife wise. I think Tenth Street's the same way with the new restaurants and such as well. But as we started down the road, we started looking at the details of the Streetscape and we realized that we really didn't put Eleventh Street in the Streetscape plan. We were doing, you know, Seventh Avenue between essentially Ninth Street and Twelfth Street. Tenth Street, we needed to connect with Sixth Street. But once we got looking at it in more detail, we realized that we probably better address Eleventh Street, considering all the excitement that's been garnered in that area recently. So as we went through the master plan and plaza updates, these were kind of the options for development of, of Eleventh Street north of Tenth or, yeah, Eleventh Street north of Seventh that came out of the master plan. You can see Phase One is really on the right, which was develop the south side of the alley down to Seventh. And then Option Two or future options could be developing a full plaza all the way to Eighth Avenue. So when this went to the committee, there was a lot of excitement for seeing the redevelopment in, in this area. But then there was a little bit of a letdown when we said, well, this is a future phase. And so we got to looking at it and honestly, it just doesn't make any sense not to do a portion of, of this area with the Streetscape project. And so, you know, it wasn't a part of the original scope of work. So we worked with RDG and asked that they would provide us some conceptual illustrations of how that could come together. And then also give us a, a cost estimate for additional design services related to this area. Anderson Bogart was pretty confident that they could work that design within their contract. Mike might be able to comment on that as well, if there's questions. But nonetheless, we, we took in, we got a contract for services fifty-four thousand five seventy for taking this portion, the south, the alley south to Seventh. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I believe the design was from Eighth to Seventh to preliminary and final construction and then also working in the final design for some of the specific artistic treatments along the Seventh Avenue corridor, some of the monuments. So that's the contract that's ahead of us or that's before the council this evening. If you go to the next slide, you can see really what they're taking is the concept from the master plan to really design development. And if you go to the next slide, please, you can see Seventh Avenue is on the, on the left, Eighth Avenue would be on the right. And really, we're taking, talking about taking that and turning it from concept to design, preliminary design, final design of that area and then incorporating that into the development and, and construction timeline as the Streetscape. So there's, there's two good benefits, we're doing it one time. We'll get the project complete and then we, we won't have a tour up, you know, a second season. So the idea is to be able to get this under design so that we can let the project all as one and move it forward in the spring. Go to the next slide, please. You can see that's a detail. At this point, we're really looking at constructing south of the alley with the initial phase. So you can see you'd incorporate the connectiveness on the right side of the screen between the alley on the west to the east through that, that little bit of a treatment. And then obviously, we then continue the, the plaza down to the Streetscape on Seventh. If you go to the next slide. This part would, would be designed, but we would delay the construction of that. Obviously, there's a great deal of parking in this area. We'd want some time to see how redevelopment occurs in that area because we do think some redevelopment will occur. And just, we hate to take the entire core area here and tear it up at one time. So that'll be a future, future phase, next slide. And then this is a really, just a fantastic perspective of what that could look like upon completion. And, you know, the contracts on the, on the agenda for, for the council's consideration, this is, this is really getting into the meat of what this area could look like. And it's pretty exciting to see, see come together. So with that, if there's any questions, I, I'll show you some other pictures in the, on the next, in the Streetscape presentation. And there's like ten thousand dollars in that scope of work that was specific to the architectural treatments of some of the monument and signage. I can show you pictures of that stuff as well, so. Any questions on that?
So before we move on to the Streetscape, any questions on this? Go ahead.
Well, just from the standpoint of project integration and, and scope integration, I, I think this makes a lot of sense. I think we all know that going north on Eleventh is, you know, there are a lot of potential trip elements there. And so thinking about how to get this all rectified in, in, what I'm hearing is, is two project components. That which is immediately adjacent to Seventh Avenue and then the second piece, which is on the north end. I, it just, it just takes care of a lot of situations. And from an aesthetic standpoint of what we're trying to do in the uptown, it just, it really is a solid integration. So I really support this if it can be done within known scope and funding boundaries.
But what, what's the timeline in terms of construction, like disruption to those businesses, that kind of?
So we'd, we'd like to be constructing this next summer.
But what is, is there a timeline of how long it would take to, or you don't know that by this point? I mean, is it?
Yeah, I, I'll have more of that, but it'd be about a year. Yeah, be about a year.
Could be a year to get it done? Wow.
Because we're talking eighth to twelfth. And Mike, so weird when he's not in the room. Barcalo is on the call, I'm sure somewhere, and he can probably speak to that.
Oh, you're talking about the Streetscape?
Yeah.
And this would be part of that?
Correct.
This isn't done separately, it's done as part of that whole project?
Now, what this does do, and I think it's just important to note, is the plaza conversation, there'll be portions of the plaza that may be accomplished with, with redevelopment of the mall site. But we would probably, well, we would need to come back the following year and work towards the plaza. And of course, we've got some funding and grant opportunities for the plaza as well. So that would be a, a project that would come probably a year after the Streetscape and Eleventh Street.
So this is where the alley, the artway is going to become very important.
Yeah, oh, yes.
As for access to businesses.
Yep.
Okay, other questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Yeah, Tom, so when we move forward, when we're talking about Streetscape and the plaza projects, is Eleventh Street between Sixth Avenue and Seventh Avenue? Is that under the umbrella of the Plaza project?
That, that is.
That is part of that. So when we talk about that project, that'll all be encompassing with that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so, and right now, there's a lot of moving pieces and a lot of timelines that we're trying to kind of put, put together. So we just received the proposed development of the mall site. It's being reviewed in-house, you know, and that project kind of bleeds into the Plaza project. So there'll be some conversations about how that works together as well. There'll probably be some encroachment agreements and conversations about those two projects melding together. You know, the, the critical piece for the mall project is that we get the Streetscape in front of that project accomplished when they're starting to open. That's just a very, those that went up to Waterloo and, and had the opportunity to walk around and talk with the developer up there, that was critical to his project's success was being able to have that. So that's why we are, you know, we're moving pretty quick, I would say, from a city perspective on design development and letting the project. But we're, we're trying to work together as a team to make this all come together in a great, it's going to be a great project.
Oh, I think it's extremely exciting to see all of these major projects with the Streetscape, the Plaza and, and the mall project all kind of happening at the same time and being able to be coordinated
Yeah.
in the, in the correct manner. So a lot of times you don't have that. So I think we're very fortunate that this is all going to be kind of under one scope, so to speak, so that everything can kind of work together, so.
Which is why I think it makes sense, as, as Grant said, to do that project. At the same time, you're going to go through the disruption of the businesses.
Yep.
You only want to do it one time.
Yeah.
We don't want to have to, you know, continually disrupt them and cause them the inconvenience. So to just get it all done at the same time is a, it's a, I think it's very smart.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Will.
So you might be covering this in your next presentation, but so it's eighth to twelfth, and you're saying a year. I assume you're going to have phases in there. So it won't be from eight to twelve, it's not going to be tore up the entire time for one whole year, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Do you know timeframes on phases? That might chime in.
Not, not at the, not at the moment, I don't have that stuff readily available. I think we're still trying to plan for that because there's, and, and there's other projects in the area that are going to help dictate some of that. You know, the Tenth Street, Tenth and Central is going to be the roundabout tore up. There's going to have to coordinate when that activity is going on.
Sure.
So, so there, this, this is going to be a pretty well-thought-out and orchestrated construction timeframe. And I, so I, I don't have any, one thing I will say, and Mike can chime in on this because I'm going to start talking about utilities and underground stuff, which I'm extremely knowledgeable of. The utilities, you know, you want to build them from the top or the bottom to the top. And so, you know, really, the, the project needs to start, you know, at the eighth, between eighth and ninth and connectivity and then bring it up to the top of Tenth Street or of Seventh Avenue. So timing that with the Tenth Street connect, or Tenth Street and Central Roundabout is going to be really, really critical, so.
And it's going to include the plaza area both north and south of, on Tenth Street from Seventh to Eighth and Sixth, those two legs are going to get reconstructed. There's twelve, none of twelfth is getting redone, correct?
Twelfth, yes, twelfth, we'll, we'll tie into the.
With the building project?
Yep.
But not Streetscape?
City project, though. But we're trying to actually time access to that parking lot during this whole thing as well.
But that won't be part of the Streetscape, correct?
Yep, no, it will be.
It will be, twelfth to the north. Both to the south.
Six and seventh, right here.
Will be part of the Streetscape. Yes, okay, but not to the north. Okay.
Yeah, if, can you go to the first slide in the? Oh, yeah, we, we're skipping Mike. That's just a precursor to what you have to come, right? So here's, here's the constraints. Just so you can see what we're talking about. The, this isn't the, the best drawing to illustrate it, but it was the only one I had on a quickly. So you can see Ninth Street, where the highlighted intersection to the west is kind of the finishing the Streetscape out to the roundabout. And if you go east of Ninth Street, you're going to go all the way to twelfth. You can see we do, we go a little bit about to the alley north and alongside Tommasos. And then we, we stub back into where the new street was constructed with Sixth Avenue along the south side of Seventh on Twelfth Street. And then obviously, you can see where we, we did not include originally in the scope of work that Eleventh Street piece between the, between tenth and twelve. But this, this is the kind of drawing where we said, huh, that might not make people very happy. You know, it's a big project, so you just, you kind of lose sight of the of the thing, so. Of the thing, so.
Okay. Other questions for Tom on this? Okay, do you want to move on to the streetscape?
Yep, so first slide of the streetscape. So the project uh outlined here, I, you know, there's a. I just kind of wanted to give a little update on where we are. We're, we're really moving towards finalizing the, the streetscape plans, the construction plans. Um, you can see the area that we just talked about is, is highlighted is kind of where we're at. Uh less eleventh street. The engineers and the planners are diligently working to get those plans caught up to these plans. So we can go to the next step, uh slide there. Um, so just highlighting, you know, the, the, the area that we're gonna see the most treatments are between tenth and twelfth and on seventh. You know, you can kind of see, and I, and I think I may have showed some of these illustrations to the council. I know the committee's seen these, but I don't, I. Honestly, don't know if I've showed it to the entire council. You can see, this is the treatment in the, in the block Seventh Avenue. Uh between uh uh. Tenth and eleventh, and so it kind of is gonna be mimicked on the other side of eleventh as well. Go to the next slide. Uh, so we're gonna have some pole spacings, uh new streetlights. Uh, you can see the, the uh. There's several different options for lighting, and I think this is gonna be a critical piece to this project. I think it's gonna be fantastic. On the north side, we got shorter poles that are more pedestrian oriented. So that we don't have poles up into the second story windows of our residential redevelopment. Uh, they're gonna be, the lighting's gonna be focused downwardly onto the sidewalk. Those are the, the poles identified as B. Uh on C, we're gonna have a little taller pole structure. Um, but you can see they're gonna um provide some uh lighting arms similar to what we have on sixth. And uh the LEDs will uh be in a, in a fashion that they can cover the sidewalk and the street at the same time. So we're gonna have pedestrian lighting on the north, and then there was over uh. The, the pole structures and the overhanging lights will be able to cover both the street and the pedestrian way. One thing you will notice on the pole structures that on the south side, they're taller. And the idea is that you can see there's some lighting fixtures on the nor- on the very top of those. The lighting is during events, um such as, you know, the peppermint walk or anything that's going on in the winter time uptown. Because we're really trying to make this a seasonal use, those lights can be turned on and really create a. A, a really, pardon the pun, but a lighted atmosphere in the uptown when, you know, it gets dark so early. So that's the reason those poles are a little bit taller. They were originally proposed at like fifty-five feet, but now we're. They're, they're, they're back down, trying to keep uh very similar to the, the height of the buildings on the north side, so they don't seem too overbearing. But there'll be poles like that on between tenth and twelve, so they can really light that up. The whole idea on the streetscape is to make it that. That plaza that can be shut down on a Friday night, Saturday morning, Saturday night, whenever, and really create a walkable experience. The, what's that?
I'm not trying to be funny, but in the meantime, what would it take to get the lights that are currently there working? Because they're not working in that area.
Yeah, you know, I noticed that right.
It's really dark in that block. But anyway, that may be a discussion for another time, but.
I thought that was just a temporary. I saw that before Thanksgiving.
But the lights aren't working, so I don't, but we can talk about that, but I just wanted to.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah.
Um, and then finally, and I think this, I don't know why, maybe it's just me, but I thought this was a really cool tribute to the past E. Uh, they call this lighting system a cantenary system. And if anybody's seen uh the historical photo. It's like a panoramic photo of that intersection from like the eighteen hundreds. There was a, a light fixture that's hung right in the middle, like a big old light bulb. Um, way back in the eighteen hundreds. And this cantenary system, as, as they call it, is gonna crisscross at the intersection. It'll be out of the way of passing vehicles and above the requirements of, of semi-tractor trailers and such. So nothing will tear them out, but. Um, will provide a highlighted intersection there in the, in the block, in the, between the two blocks, and it'll really make a connection between. The eleventh street plaza and then the central plaza and in the park area. And really highlight that intersection for pedestrian crossings as well. I think that's a really cool tribute to kind of the past. So this is just a perspective showing how that lighting system works. Um, you can see that. You got uh the, the light, the light on the front, the higher, the taller lighting. I don't think that we went with the pedestrian lighting. I think the front cobra, the, the overhead light was gonna pass through and, and actually project onto the sidewalk. I think they determined they could do that. And then you can see from a scale perspective how the pedestrian lighting is, is really trying to. Move away from impeding into the second story windows to, to not affect uh upper story redevelopment. One of the things that we, we do foresee coming out of the conversation is going to be. Uh uplighting on the buildings. So that's something we're hoping to be able to work with building owners on as well. So this is just a, a good perspective of looking down uh Seventh Avenue. You can see uh the different lighting and then uh. I want to point out right now, and then we can talk about it in a minute, uh the pavement treatments. Um, maybe you can go to the next slide too. So from a pavement perspective, there's been a lot of conversation about brick. I can't believe how many years of my career I've talked about brick. Clay brick, concrete brick, and reclaimed brick is the most recent conversation. So you can see there's different patterns being proposed within the project. Right now, it's being scoped and planned. Uh and engineered for PCC in the drive aisles. And then unit pavers. I think right now it's been talked about as concrete pavers in the parking for durability. Clay pavers behind the curb to match and kind of tie into the Sixth Avenue uh area. Uh B and C identified in the crosswalk would be some sort of unit pavers. However, this, this illustration doesn't show it. There would need to be a, a concrete center. To this, colored concrete, we'd work it into the design. Um, because of uh recent uh. Rulings, uh you, you have to have provide ADA and uh crosswalks. Which comply with ADA, they can't be brick, they gotta be uh smooth concrete. So we've worked that into the design and the, in the details. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. The, the uh, one thing that is interesting, and I'm just highlighting, and I don't have a really good perspective in, in this illustration. Is that we're going to no curbs. So when you go to a, it's a plaza street, I know we talked about it at, at length. Uh, I think more of as a desire. Uh, when we started this project, but it really did come together. And so the project's being designed to be curbless. So at night, on weekends, um if you have a stroller or your children. Have you ever been to a, an event where it's, they, they block off the street? You see people trip all the time because they don't even think about the curb being there. So I think this would be a really, really neat amenity for the area. Really lend itself to be a great plaza space outside of the other plazas being created. This is just showing a little detail um on, on how that, I think it's interesting to talk about E. Um, so there would be a, a gutter line in the, in the street, so the water would, would shed and uh. Kind of get out of the way, and you won't have that gutter. Um, if you. Couldn't say gutter, but the curb line in a lot of areas where the water will sit on the edge, this is kind of gonna be. Uh provided so it would, would, would flow to that, that edge line and not be gathered at the corners. I know on eleventh street, we have a couple areas where. Uh water stands pretty significantly uh at the gutter line.
So there's no traditional curb?
Right? Nope. There will be some raised areas. Um, you can see on the edge of the page there where the planter boxes would be. Provides a little bit of a barrier. Uh, one thing you'll see probably as well will be where the uh street lighting is. You'll have a further uh raised concrete base than you would normally, because you don't want cars hitting. You know, if they do go over, you don't want them to hit the light pole, knock them over. So there'll be some, there's just design considerations that come with that proposal. Excellent, Darryl. So just another perspective, kind of putting it all together, and you can kind of see the. Um, there's a proposal for the street furnishings would be located, and then uh the. Yellow areas kind of highlight some of the design or upscaled markers that are being proposed. You can see the one that I think's pretty exciting is. One that would identify the entryway into uh the, the artway uh between in the middle of the block there. It's also showing uh the stage uh location proposed in the, in the plaza area. On the south side. Thanks. So these are just some of the concepts that have been um put together for some of the, 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 the markers uh architecturally. Uh there, these are not finalized, but this is kind of some of the temper, the, the uh initial design being put together. If you go to the next face, Darryl. One of the things that's really been exciting and, and kind of different about the project is really trying to bring that winter. Atmosphere into the streetscape, which has caused us to really need to take a look at how lighting is used. And so you can see there's different treatments of lighting within the monuments that are being proposed, as well as some on-the-street uh shadow boxing. You can see where it says Uptown Marion and Leaf. That doesn't have to be the design, but in the winter time. Um, for certain events, you could turn on the lights that may have a pattern or artistic. Way to just kind of make your walk through the uptown a lot more pleasurable, um using something other than lighting or signage. So it's the shadows, it's kind of an interesting way to kind of portray the uptown. Uh, next slide. So this is kind of putting it all together, just a perspective of what it looks like during the day. You can see the monument signs on the, on the north side. If you go to the next slide, and it gives you a perspective of what happens at night when they're lit up. And then, next slide, Darryl. Those, there's that gateway piece. It's kind of just identifying the entrance into the art, art, artway. Um, from seventh at night. Next slide, Carol. And so this is just another perspective looking west down Seventh Avenue. And I think there's a night, there you go. Um, so this is a good slide. I think there might be more slides, but we could, this might, this is the last one. Perfect. Um, so, you know, I really wanted to just. Give a little update where we're at. I don't think we've talked in a while about this. Um, these are just some uh drawings that have been uh provided to us by RDG. As we come forward with the final design, I think I'll probably have RDG do this presentation as the designer. I just wanted to give the council a little bit of an update. There are three kind of issues that are out there um that we're kind of grappling with at this time. And uh outside of these three issues, I think we're sitting pretty good. One is the center uh drive aisle of the street. Um, so we're, the way it's proposed, it's PCC, so it's just concrete. One of the questions has been brought forward ag- again is the, the idea of a brick uh paver in the streetway. Something different than what we've talked about for six, because I think, I think folks are a little. Uh jaded with what we have in Sixth Avenue. The clay pavers just haven't really done what I think everybody envisioned them to do. Um, and then there's the black markings and such. But one, one, one. One paver that has come back as a conversation piece is reclaimed brick. Um, you know, we're talking about the most historic portion of the community. Uh, the north portion of Seventh Avenue is our, is our historic commercial district. Uh, we do everything we can to preserve that district and those buildings. We're gonna talk about another way to do that here in a second as number two, but. Uh, so the conversation really is. Is there support to at least looking at reclaimed brick for that surfacing? In the parking and in the drive aisles for that portion of seventh between tenth and twelfth. Pricing-wise, it's about the same as a, as a unit paver, a little bit less actually. But uh we've, we've sourced some that are local, or they're Iowa City, so they're local. And uh we've got some. Uh conversations going. We could draw up some and provide some cost estimates and illustrations to illustrate it within the context of this. But I just feel like, and I think the committee uh and internal staff would support the conversation, at least having and bringing it forward. Uh, from a maintenance perspective, uh one of the things that's been uh brought forward by, by Ryan. Um, is that. The durability is there because these bricks are the bricks that we're seeing in our streets currently that have been there for a hundred plus years. And so that's, I think, been the major question with uh the streets that we've talked about. Or Sixth Avenue and the clay papers that we've seen done more recently. So. That's one of the issues that the, that the group is kind of, we, we need to get some resolved to, and I think we'd like to have the conversation about reclaimed brick again. So you don't have to answer me one hundred percent now, but just so there's an awareness that that's a question that's, that's being uh discussed. Uh, secondly, and it goes back to preservation, as we continue down the road to, of this project. You can see we're gonna make a substantial investment in the streetscape, hardscape and uh. And just the aesthetic treatments in this area. There's gonna be a lot of infrastructure. We're talking about conduit, wiring. Uh, there's been talk of um piping, the ability to have uh music piped into the area, so that's just another conduit piece. So we don't really want to see the area tore up one year later. Because there's a development proposal that comes forward for a building and that needs to be sprinkled. So water service to the buildings that would. Accept and be able to handle sprinkler systems uh in the uptown is, is, is critical. Um, and we feel like with the project, we should be moving forward with. Ensuring that that water service line is provided to all the buildings. This is not a cheap venture, estimated about fifteen thousand dollars per building. Because it'd likely be a six-inch line to the two-story buildings to provide for that sprinkler system. So as we work through the cost and conversation on cost, I think one of the things we're gonna have to talk through is how that. How that gets paid. And that may be um. Uh, asking the building owners to, to, to step into the arena of helping and assisting with that. That, that process. So that's another piece that I think we're, we're gonna need to be talking with. I know we're gonna. Uh, set up some conversations with building owners through the uptown district and. And so that'll be a piece that I think we'll, we'll also have to have a conversation about. And then uh the third piece, and I think the council's pretty much aware of this one, was the ADA improvements. I think we, we voiced at a meeting, or maybe it was the steering committee. That as we go through this uh streetscape design process, we're gonna be uh having to address uh deficiencies. Um, and ADA accessibility. Some of the building, some of the buildings we just can't fix. I mean, it, it's just impossible to. To fix the situation. Others, we can with some uh, with some improvements. And uh I think we're uh around the two fifty to three hundred thousand dollar mark on what it's gonna cost to make all of those improvements. So when you start adding some of those costs up that are very specific to property owners. Um, realizing it does impact a private property owner and we do these projects. The question is, 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 is where is the line between what the city pays for and what the building owners are responsible for? Or what uh we can work with them on to accommodate these types of improvements. So. I think that's just, I just want to be very upfront with the council and, and let you guys know, these are some, some conversations and they're. What's that saying? They say in leadership, if you, if you can, if you can handle the tough conversations, you're gonna, you're really gonna be able to exceed. Excel. Well, we got some tough conversations ahead of us, I think, on, on these, on these projects. And I think those are the three. Obviously, the first one is more of a council conversation and maintenance issue, but the, the last two. We're talking about quite a bit of money uh as it relates to the design of the project, so.
Well, but they may be tied together because, I mean, I think. Any cost savings that you might be able to achieve on what kind of material you use on the road. Maybe able to be applied towards these other important elements, which is, you know, accessibility and all that and in the. Yeah, on, on the issue of reclaimed brick, I think what would be helpful, at least for me, is. If we were able to see what the cost difference, estimated cost differences. Of putting the brick versus concrete in the street, in the, you know, driving portion of the street. Versus only, you know, maybe using it on the parking areas. And what is the long-term cost savings? I mean, you know, uh. You know, how long is that concrete street gonna last? And we have to replace it or pave it or whatever, resurface it. What is the cost savings of having brick if there is any? Uh, if you're saying it's gonna be there for a hundred years or? So I mean, I think some of those things, I mean. So I mean, I think some of those things, I mean, to me would be kind of, kind of important. I think, you know, I've made it clear that anything like Sixth Avenue, I just think is a waste of money. I don't think we got the aesthetic element that we wanted from it. I think it looks like asphalt street right now. And I think there is quite a bit of, from what I understand, quite a bit of cost savings by not having brick. But if you, you know, if there's some long-term cost savings, maybe we should know about that with maintenance and resurfacing and that kind of stuff. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, just, Your Honor, just to expand on that thought. Tom, as I looked at this total presentation, I really, you know, I like the visual concept and, and what's being conveyed here. I guess one of the things, whether it be the, I forget what you call the, the lighted artistic structures that border the, the Seventh Avenue, whether it be brick, concrete, asphalt for the roadway, I, I think we really need to think about life cycle costs relative to maintenance. And is there a native advantage to any one approach that needs to be factored into the decision calculus? So I guess, you know, I'm sure Ryan's got opinions about, you know, what the life cycle cost is for brick and we direct experience with it. But that, I think those kinds of considerations ought to be an input to final construction considerations. One, one thing in this, I'm glad you have this diagram here. This walkway that goes from, I guess it would be Plaza South to Plaza North, is wide open for tra, car to turn into the plaza. And so I would expect, or would at least anticipate that there is some kind of traffic barrier that doesn't impede handicapped or pedestrian utilization of that walkway, but certainly is an impediment to a vehicle turning in there. And I, I think about that if there's a crowd of people standing on the sidewalk, having a conversation. And for some reason, for some occurrence, like somebody has a medical condition that all of a sudden causes a car to swerve into, into that area, that it is prevented from hitting pedestrians.
Good point.
To add to that too, sorry.
Go ahead, Will.
You could easily, someone thinks diagonal parking and then more diagonal parking right at the cross. And then my thought too was where the crosswalk is with no curbs, when you're pulling into the south side, if there's a barrier at each stall, so you don't go too far and into the sidewalk.
Okay, Randy?
Thank you. I, I look at these as well and I get excited about, you know, the streets and the surfaces and so forth, but it also gives me the opportunity to come back and kind of bring up that enforcing our weight limits on our heavy trucks. You know, this is a, this is exactly why I think we should be enforcing those things, because I think part of these weight permits ought to be put into a line item so that these, we have some sources of funding to go back to, to do those repairs. It's not the bricks. It gets kind of exciting to see the bricks. The bricks will do well. They've, they've withstood time and hundreds of years. It's what we do on top of those bricks that breaks it down. And so this being a major arterial road through our community, we can sit here and just watch these dump trucks go back and forth and semi trucks. And that's what tears these up, especially when we get into these subs zero degree temperatures in the wintertime. So I'm going to come back around again and say that we should be enforcing those and we should be taking part of that money from those permits to create a bucket of money that we can go to, to do some of these repairs for that. And I think the time is now to be taking a look at that, so. You know, some of these, some of these renditions are obviously super nice to take a look at, but brings pause to wonder what they'll actually, how they will withhold up to our traffic.
Yeah, one quick question, doesn't pertain to these two blocks, but one block that obviously has a lot of traffic is 10th Street between Sixth and Seventh Avenue, which currently is a very old brick street. So I'm assuming in your plans, that will be concrete. And so is there any discussion or plan to repurpose those bricks on that street? I mean, they've been there for a long, long time. So I don't know if there's been any discussion, any way to use those in the Plaza project or somewhere else, but is there any thought or discussion on how to repurpose those or is that even possible?
We haven't got into the, the details of that. I do know that when Ryan, I'm going to throw him to the wolves, I guess, to say, when he was talking to the, the folks regarding reclaimed brick in Iowa City, I think they've raised an interest in any of the brick that we would pull out of the streets to, to, to do and use for potential other projects. So that what they do is they take the, the brick from street projects like this and then re, you know, then they repackage it and sell them off, so. So yeah, Ryan, would that be a correct statement? So. But clearly, I think if, if there's a way to repurpose them within the project too, that might be something.
I think that'd be kind of cool.
In the Plaza.
In the Plaza, yeah, in the Plaza, not, not the street here.
I mean, I think the community would receive that.
And then they know that those actually came from that street. I think that'd be kind of neat to repurpose that.
Other questions or comments for Tom on this? Yes, go ahead, Will.
Are you wanting opinions on the ADA and, and sprinklers this evening? Or you just, I guess I would ask for.
I'm always willing to listen to the council. I mean, we're grappling with it at staff level. I mean, I'll just tell you that. I mean, it's, you know, there's half a million dollars worth of improvements that are sitting out there. And some of that is going to be directly beneficial to the business owners, which, you know, is great. I mean, we all want to see those buildings preserved, so it's just the question is how, how do we get there?
I know you've got multiple options of how to approach it. So it might be good for you to put them down on paper and kind of what the mayor talked about with the, with the bricks and stuff, and then bring that back to us so we can. Because I know, I mean, the talk of size of, of the line, the water lines, the different grants that are available for ADA and stuff like that. So it'd be good for everyone to be able to
Understand.
Understand all the different options. Sometime soon, I would assume you would need to know that.
Yep, we're, we're getting down to that point.
And there, and there's different levels that you could assess, right? I mean, it doesn't have necessarily be 100% assessment. It can be a certain portion. So I don't know if there's something that you could come to a happy medium between the, the property owners in the city to, because there definitely is a benefit to the properties and it'll make their properties more marketable and, you know, increase the types of uses, you know, all of that when you have sprinkler systems and.
One, one of them too is the, the recon, like if, like if that, Joe developer comes in and buys one of the building and wants to really redo it and, and, you know, put multifamily in and sprinkle it, you know, the, the idea of how that gets accomplished, once we have a new project is going to be substantially different. You know, normally they just go up and tear up a little piece of concrete and cut it in and then come back and fill it and replace it. Well, when we get to this degree, and I think Lon can speak to ordinances that have been in place in communities where you have to go panel to panel, everything that's pulled out is put back in, and it's extremely expensive, extremely. As a matter of fact, we'll, we'll likely bring forward an ordinance to, to that regard on how repairs and construction is accomplished after we make this. So if you're a private developer, you come in, I mean, you got some responsibility to put that back in a different manner than standard construction would require. That being said, there's also, and we were talking about this this morning from a, a fire, a fire safety, because we don't normally get into a situation where we require such an improvement of the part of a project. It might be a, a conversation the fire department will need to bring forward. Obviously, staff as a whole would bring it forward, but it would be primarily identified through the fire department to ensure that when the project does go in, that, that those improvements are required as a part of the project. And so, because right now we don't require that a building put in a water line specifically for a sprinkler system. But clearly, this is a situation and it's not uncommon for communities that when you do such a massive and expensive project that you do this, you only want to do it once. So that might be another conversation that comes forward is, is how do we ensure that these buildings are preserved and what that means from redevelopment perspective?
Okay.
Your Honor, I had a couple of, of things for Tom.
Okay, go ahead, Renee.
Thank you. So the first one is just a question. If we do the no curbs, is that already ADA compliant or is there something different to look at with that?
I, I think it, it would be, I don't know if I would call it completely ADA compliant. It would certainly be a better situation for those with a disability. But and the only reason I'm, I'm certainly, this is not my field of extrovertise. The only reason I would say that is right now they'd be brick between the, even the rolled curb and, and the, the area that's brick behind, behind that area. So, and right now, brick is not considered to be ADA compliant.
If I can just interject, when you talked about the ADA accessibility and all that, 200 and or 300,000 or whatever, 200, some thousand, were you, were you referring to accessibility to the buildings themselves?
Oh.
Is that, that maybe where Renee is?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, were you talking about accessibility to the buildings?
The buildings, yes.
Okay, so you might make that clear.
The entryways, so the Made Right Building, you know, there's just not a way that we can make that entrance ADA accessible without a pretty substantial improvement in the public right of way. And there are some that you just can't accommodate. And so there, there are exclusions and abilities to not have to do it, but obviously you want to provide it where you can and when you can.
Okay, I just want to make that clear that it's beyond the curbs.
Yeah, no, I, I, and that's helpful. And I think that of every area in town, this one probably has to be the most ADA compliant, not only because it'll be brand new and it should be, but it will be the most visited and trafficked, et cetera. So, okay, that answers that. And, you know, just to kind of echo, I think what definitely Randy said, but I think everyone's feeling, it's so exciting to see this, just the renderings of what's coming and what's to be in, in the past slides that you showed. When we sat down with Monica to talk about strategic plan and she asked, she met with each council member individually and she asked each one, what's your biggest, you know, what are your biggest priorities? And I told her I really had two. And one of them was this uptown project. I think that for tourism and our hotel motel and small businesses and really just the heart of the community, I personally think we should be investing in exactly, you know, what we're doing and what we're talking about doing. So this is exciting and I'm glad it's, you know, it's right here on the forefront and there's a lot of redevelopment going on. That being said, I will put in my two cents for brick on the street and that is no. You know, having done the homework that Jacob gave us to drive around, and I think it's 11th Street, and driving down, is it, is it 11th Street, the brick one that was on our homework sheet? Can someone confirm, is that right? So that was horrible. I don't know, you know, maybe it's because it's not the reclaimed brick, but even where it was patched, it was just, and where it's, where brick is patched with concrete or asphalt, you know, and it just totally goes against. And I think, you know, to Randy's point about trucks and wear and tear and snow and ice and salt, I, I wouldn't want to put the investment on the street. I would much rather put it into the lighting and the landscaping and the signage and the wayfinding and all of those other things that, you know, are, will be helpful and useful and have a lot more life value to them. I do like the brick, you know, around the sidewalk areas and some other things like that. But under cars, I'm not a fan of that. But, you know, I would like to see it in other places. And then I guess my last question is, does this current plan increase, decrease, or maintain the status quo with existing parking in this area?
I believe that it increases it in these two blocks. Overall, I'd have to really do some digging into it. The, when we go to the angle parking on the south side of Seventh, that really does increase the number of parking stalls. One of the things that we're going to have to do as a part of this project is really to take a look at the ADA accessibility stalls. You know, as the density increases down here, we're probably going to have more requirements for the number of stalls that we're providing in ADA accessibility. But I, I think overall, we will likely lose stalls as it relates to, especially like on the north side of Seventh Avenue, you've seen with the Plaza design, there's a, there's a significant reduction in, in parking as that gets fully built. So I think there's, one of the things that we wanted to do at the onset of this project was really get an idea of, of the parking situation that currently exists and what we projected to be in the future. When we started this project, we were right in the beginnings of COVID. And so we have great photos of the uptown with no cars parked in them. But, you know, it's obviously not the, not the future, we hope. And certainly, it's difficult to do a parking study 100%, but certainly when we do the, the, the final presentation, we can, we can identify whether we have more or less parking. I know we're going to angle parking.
Yeah, because my, you know, obviously this is going to bring more. And then we have the farmer's market, we'll have the library, and then we have that huge project where we'll have more residential in the, you know, in that area as well. And I think that parking, wherever it's going to be, has to be a piece of the overall budget to this entire project to make it successful and, you know, not frustrating for people so that we can accommodate people and, and people can get into the businesses and shop. And so I think it, you know, looking at it holistically, you know, I think as Grant and maybe Steve and Will, I mean, everybody's been saying, it'd be great to, you know, look at all of the proposed numbers that we can consider the different options, but look at it all at once as opposed to piecemeal, because I think that will help us prioritize what we really want to get out of this and what we're able to do. You know, when we're weighing things against each other and figuring out what's the most important, what do we have to have? Or what would just be nice to have, like the, the light shining on the street with, you know, particular names of events? I think it's cool, but a low priority when put against some of the other stuff. But I think to, to look at everything, you know, all at once to the degree that we can and, and look at it. I'm glad that, you know, we never, we didn't go for the parking garage, having looked at what happened to, you know, see our parking because of the pandemic. So at least we're not dealing with that now, but we might have to have that conversation again soon if it's worth looking at something like that in the general area. And, and if that's, has to happen, then it should be part of the discussion with this, because this is going to bring that need to have all of that additional parking. So just some thoughts to help you guys as you're at a staff level, looking at putting more things together for future discussions. But this was great and it's exciting. And I'm glad to be a part of council while we're looking at this project, because I think this is really some legacy stuff going on in Marion. Thanks, Tom.
Okay, go ahead, Will.
I had two things. One, I go on, Renee took the words right out of my mouth. I was going to talk about the parking. And I think we will see a, a need for more parking in the uptown and that potentially a ramp here in the future. You drive by the new city lot on Eighth and 12th every day. During the day, that lot's full. It's completely full every day. So the need is definitely going to be there. The second point, we need to have a discussion soon about upkeep of this when it's done. And what's going to happen if it's going to be coming out of Ryan's budget, if it's going to be coming out of Sess' budget? I mean, where, where the upkeep is going to be come from? Because it's going to be something that we need, need to take care of for, not just on a, you know, once in a while type of thing, but a continual basis. And the fact that someday soon, there's going to be Smith District potentially in the uptown. Have to figure out what that's going to cover, what the city's going to cover as far as maintenance. So there's a lot of, a lot of discussion about how this is going to be going down in the future.
And some of those conversations have started internally.
Good, good.
Okay, Steve?
Yeah, just a general comment. I would have to echo a lot of Renee's comments about where the dollar. Yeah, just a general comment. I would have to echo a lot of Renee's comments about where the dollars should be spent. So we haven't heard what the dollar difference is between. Those two blocks being poured concrete versus brick or reclaimed brick. However. In general, if it's a significant dollar issue, I agree with Renee, I'd rather spend the dollars. Outside of the street. And again, coming back to Randy's comment, that street needs to be able to sustain itself. For very heavy truck traffic and concrete probably supports that better than the brick and, and in the long term. And the other thing, where you're looking at that intersection where those two people are crossing. I mean, you can always, it doesn't look as nice, but you can do colored brick. You know, or colored concrete for that section to at least accent it. It doesn't look as good as brick, but you can at least, you know, color the, the concrete for a section. Or crosswalks and things like that to, to at least add some color and accent. Not as nice as brick, but it's an option.
I guess that's, I mean, that's exactly what I was trying to say. Initially is that. You know, I was on the committee when we did, when we initially started working on the streetscape and, and it, it. You know, it, it sounds nice and everybody thinks, oh, you know, brick, it, it, you know, gives you a warm feeling and it's historic and all that. And. You know, it, but, but what's the practicality of it? And. When you're looking at spending money. Is money better, better spent on other things that are, you're going to get more out of? And can you get the same effect by doing the strips of brick on the sidewalk? And is that enough? And, and, and get in with the snow and winters and snow removal and all of that. You know, is it more practical? To have concrete in the portions where people, people are driving and use the brick. As decoration. To still get the same effect. But it's more practical, it's less expensive and the money can be used on the ADA accessibility and the. Sprinkler or the water, the water issues and all that, so that we can. You know, make our money. Be used more effectively, I think, so. Other questions? Okay, thank you, Tom.
So just, just so the council's aware, those, you know, we're going to be. Trying to finalize some of the design items. You'll get the luxury of a, of the consultants presenting to you and they can probably cover these a little more. Succinctly as they're integral into this design process in the future. And then. We're hoping to get that wrapped up here in the next, you know. Few weeks so that we can start down the road of getting the plans approved and. We're on a short timeframe, want to get this built next year, so.
Colette, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you for catching. I was trying to hit all my buttons at once and I failed miserably. I just wanted to echo a few things. First of all, super, super excited about this project. But I think it's going to be really important. To find a way to really project. I don't know if the term is project management this outright. So we have milestones and before making any decisions, we have a better sense about. The budget and how this decision impacts a different decision. As opposed to sort of doing a piece here and a piece there. I think about. You know, the, the discussion around whether we use bricks or we use cement or imprinted cement. Also, you know, the cost sharing with our potential businesses. So I just really want to push for us to think about a way. For us council to have all the information to make these decisions. I think we'll make better decisions if we can do that. And then. Will brought up a really important part and this whole idea of maintaining after we've done all of this really hard work. I spent a lot of time recently during what Small Business Saturday, right? And. There's a lot of opportunity for us to. To do better in maintaining our uptown. So just really want to encourage us to think about that as we continue to move forward with this project.
Good points, thank you. I just have one final question, Tom. So the, the artistic elements, these leaves, is that, I mean, is that decided or is that just a sample, an example?
They're, right now, I think that there's a lot of support for those moving them forward. From the committee perspective.
From the committee?
Yeah, but I don't think that those are exact designs.
Okay, it does kind of look like Canada, but.
Well, I think the idea was to tie it in with the. Laux Park.
With what?
With Laux Park.
Laux Park?
And the artistic, the oak leaf, the.
Oh, oh, the overhang?
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, I, I, I think it might be worth kind of considering other options, but. Hey, other questions? All right, we have, thank you. We have a COVID update from Lawn.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Really since a couple of days before Thanksgiving, we've seen some fairly positive trends in the cases locally. But I would anticipate that. Until we know for sure whether or not there's going to be any kind of a post Thanksgiving holiday bounce, we're going to continue to operate using phase one protocols. And then. The experience that we see, once we know what happens with, with Thanksgiving, will probably inform what will happen with the other holidays coming up here in December. So I would not anticipate at this point that we'd be looking at. Any type of a return to being more open until the middle of January at least. So there's not much change on the local front. During the press conference that she held today, the governor did call for federal action for additional relief for businesses and additional. Tools for dealing with COVID. That is something that we're keeping a fairly close eye on because the. Bank of Leave that was specifically established for COVID under the CARES Act actually expires as of December 31st of this year. But with the pandemic still going in full force, if that's not renewed or extended, we will probably be looking at alternatives locally to ensure that we don't provide an incentive for people to. Come to work sick, given how contagious this actually turned out to be. That's really all I have on that unless anyone has questions.
Any questions for Lawn? Okay, thank you, Lawn. Oh, so I'm sorry, did someone have a question? I thought I heard someone chiming in, okay. Then the final item is the discussion regarding CIP projects for airport. And I will turn over the meeting at this, on this to the mayor pro temp. Thank you.
Okay, who is leading this discussion here? Giving us this presentation?
City Engineer Barklow will be doing that. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you, Mike.
So I know a couple of council members have been more involved with the Marion Municipal Airport Committee than others. So just kind of wanted to take some time. To present to council all the different projects that we're proposing to come forward. From the committee to the CIP group. For prioritization against all the other projects. And so just a high level overview first, this is kind of the site plan of the airport as it exists today. So one of the, the big concepts or issues that has been an issue that has come up a few times. Are random vehicles that are either going out there for the volleyball. Or just happen to be out there and then ending up out onto the runway. And obviously that's not something that we want to have happen is. Plane coming in to land or take off with vehicles out there on the, the runway. So we've been looking at ways that we can try and modify the entrances and add some fence. We got some signs and some banners back out there. To try and prevent some of that, but. There's still more that needs to be done that has been brought up from the. Municipal Airport Committee. So if you can see the two Cheyenne driveways, those are the driveways that exist today. So there's two of them. Today. So it's kind of confusing when you drive out there of where are you supposed to drive in to get to the airport. What our proposal has been, and we have talked to Lex Air about this, is the center. I'll call it the purple, making one driveway in the middle, removing the two outside driveways. What that does then is we can expand the apron or the airport parking lot, which is the item in orange. And make a bigger area and tie down areas. And then. Making it more clear, there's also the fence that's noted in there in green. To kind of differentiate where the vehicle should be versus where the airplane should be. So we don't have that mix on the runway. So what I'll do now is I'll go through each of the projects, these ready or council packets. Can I go through? And if you have questions, let me know. I am in no way an airport expert, but I will do my best and some of the things, depending on how detailed you want to get. I might have to come back to give you additional information. So we'll go ahead and go to the next slide. So the first thing that's required is a beacon. And so what this is, is basically if you've driven on the interstate at night and you've driven by an airport. You see the light that's flashing in the, in the. Air. Basically, it just rotates one side's green, one side's white, and it gives the pilots basically. Direction as far as the airport's there. That's where I need to make my approach to come down and land. It is actually a requirement that if you have a runway that has runway lights, which we do. That you have to have an operating beacon. We had an operating beacon at one time that's original to the airport, the, the Rockwell engineers have tried to fix. They cannot fix it. So we have actually had Anderson Boger. Our on-call engineer worked together, put a. A grant together for emergency application to the DOT for funding. So it is about 53,000. I believe it's either 10 or 15,000 that the DOT would pay for. Sorry, the dog was chewing on this toy. Next slide, please. The other one is kind of a combination of all of them that I kind of explained earlier. So it's the fence, sign, entrance and drive. So removing the two driveways that we discussed, adding one new main driveway that would come in next to the, the current FBO building. Putting in the fence to keep the cars out of the runway. Tom really likes the sign that's out there, but maybe we can make it at least a little nicer than the wood fence that's just painted. So that people actually know that that is the, the Marion Airport. So this total is 155,000 to make these improvements. This is something that we'll likely have to change the lease on or the FBO agreement. Because we are making some. Improvements on private property. But it is for the, the airport and safety issues that we have heard numerous times out there that they're worried about. Next slide. So the airport approach. Is basically an inclement weather. It gives the pilot, assuming they have a new enough aircraft that has the equipment onboard. Basically a GPS guidance to get their plane until they're low enough that they could actually see the runway. And so it gives them an X, Y, Z coordinate as they come down. And gets them into the correct position so that as they say it was cloudy, once they get through those clouds. They would be able to see the runway and then manually land the plane. This is not an autopilot or anything, but it, it. It's something that is then having to update it yearly. And it's, there's basically three different ways that you can get the, the approach done. You can contact the FAA and they'll do it for you. But that could be 100 years because we're such a small airport until they do that. And then there's two companies out there that can put those together. And then they actually have to fly it. And make sure that it works. And then they basically come back in every year and calibrate it. Make sure there's not anything that has changed or impeded the approach. But it's just a way so that in inclement weather, when they can't see the actual runway. They at least have some guidance to get them down so that they can get closer to the runway and land safely. And if you guys have questions, I'm going through this, please let me know. Next slide. The other one is we have the existing alliance lines that are along 151. And right now there's the orange balls that are on them, but those obviously are a hindrance to taking off and landing. And so we actually need to get those buried. So it's the red, it's the dashed and solid line on the north side of 151. It's about $180,000 to bury those overhead power lines. Next slide. The DHF communications or the Very High Frequency, which is 300 to 300 megahertz. That is the. Frequency that is used both for pilots to talk to each other. To talk to ground control, you know, if they have a guy out there that's mowing to make sure that he knows that he needs to get out of the way for the plane to land. It also controls our runway lights. So at night, the runway lights are dim, just enough so that you can barely see them. And what they do is they basically click on the radio at that frequency. And they brighten up so that they can see them to the proper level and then they can land with them. That way they're not at the highest intensity all night long to save power. So this would just be transferring the communications through the. From the, the FBO to the city to own them. The public service has a radio frequency, engineering has a frequency. Obviously, police and fire have multiple frequencies. And so this is just adding another frequency from. That pool to our pool for the FCC. Next slide. So the Quonset hut. Unfortunately, the Duracho did not take it out. It did do some small damage, but not too much. But in order to do the apron expansion, we do need to take down that Quonset hut. There's a little bit of. Items that are stored in it, but for the most part, it's just a remnant building that's out there. And that is dictated as item number six on the picture there. And so it's just going out and. It wouldn't take much to, to take it down, but it did withstand the Duracho, so. Next slide. So the compass rose. It seems like it's expensive being $62,000 and the, the picture to the left is actually the compass rose from Google Maps that we used to have. Out at the airport. It's denoted as item nine on the, the picture on the right. But basically what this is, this is a way for them to calibrate their instruments onboard so that the, the plane knows which way is north when they're flying. So obviously, when you're not on a roadway, it's important to know that you're going the right direction. And so that, that compass rose is painted by a firm that comes out there. And so those of you that don't know, there's a difference between magnetic north and true north. And so they just have to get it out there and get it perfect. And so it has. Ways for them to, to do that. And you can see that has several angles to it for them to test their equipment on it. Next slide. So the RPZ purchase or the runway protection zone is basically what we call a no build area. So this is at both the north and the south ends of the runway where basically nothing is allowed to be there in a permanent fashion. If you look at like the Cedar Rapids Airport, this is farm fields. And so. Obviously, Highway 151 is part of the north RPZ. And that's okay, because any vehicle that is there is considered a temporary impediment. Because that vehicle should not be stalled or hopefully not stalled along the highway. Obviously, there would be instances where there, there could be. But nothing can basically be built in that area. So it's proposed to actually purchase those areas to protect those areas because. We're not allowing anyone to build on top of those areas. So that's approximately 666,000. Obviously, an appraisal will have to be done. And we'll have to go through the full 6B process in order to purchase it, just like we would do for right away. For any city project.
Hey, Mike, do you want questions now or do you want to get through this? I, I've had a couple and I'm not sure how long this prezo is.
Sure, if they have specific items about the specific things I'm talking about, I'd rather talk to, about them while the slides are up.
Okay, so why would we want to purchase this land when we can do nothing with it? I haven't, I, I don't understand why we would want this.
So because the property owner isn't allowed to build anything on it. And so most airports, in order to protect their airport. They buy it because why would the property owner want to hold on to it?
But we don't own an airport.
We do own an airport.
I mean, we own a runway, right? We don't own any of the stuff around it for the most part. Like this, this makes us more owner because we would be buying into it more, but I feel like we have so little. This and the frequency thing, I apologize for not asking earlier. I wrote a note. This and the frequency thing, I apologize for not asking earlier, I wrote a note. I don't know why we would want to take that over either when we don't, we don't have the flight school, we don't, you know, run the FBO. I just, I'm not understanding most of what we're going over because it seems like we're making an investment in something. That there's no benefit to us investing in.
So I'll start with RPZ since that's up. So again, because let's say that to the south, that property owner comes in and wants to build something there. We would actually have to say, no, you're not allowed per zoning to build anything there. And so by rights, because we're telling them they can't build anything. You know, they're paying taxes on it. I mean, right now they can farm it as they're farming it, but they wouldn't be able to build any kind of structure there. And so because we're taking those land rights away from them, in essence. We need to purchase that land so that they can't do anything with it. So we are protecting the runway, which we do own.
So we have to do this. This isn't a choice that you're saying. Like, wasn't this zoned in a way that the landowner knows they can't build on it anyway?
Most airports do buy their RPZs so that they control that.
But is this a must or a recommendation, I guess is my question?
I would have to check further into that. I know this is a recommendation from the Marion Municipal Airport Committee.
Okay, no, that's fair, and I'm not trying to jump on you. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out what we have to do versus. What, you know, of course the committee's going to want this, and I, I were on that committee and I was pro Marion Airport. I'd ask for all of these things too, but looking at taxpayer money, I'm not. So I, I basically, you know, the beacon so far is the only thing that sounds like we have a liability to spend money on. But the other stuff I questioned, but okay, keep going. I, I have a better understanding on the RPZ now. Thank you.
Mike, before we move on, I got a question. So in the list, CIP list that we received. It's showing RPZ property purchase as a million ninety-five thousand, you're showing six hundred and sixty thousand. And in the right, it also indicated probably the cost per acre that they're using is on the low side. So the million ninety-five is probably quite a bit low by at least maybe a factor of, of, of. Two. So can you, are you talking, is your six sixty the same thing as this million ninety-five? Are these two different numbers?
I might have transposed the number somewhere, but again, it would have to be an actual appraisal. It, it is a high number, so we'll have to do an actual appraisal and go to the six B process to actually purchase the property.
So we're talking only land north of the airport on the north side of one fifty-one.
And the south side, it's both.
And so both sides. Yeah, so it appears to me that based on what's here is that. Million dollars that's on this sheet is, is low by quite a bit. So the number as we move forward and even have some of the discussions, that number becomes. Obviously, by far the largest item on the sheet. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I can look into that. And then back to Renee on your other one, because that frequency controls our lights, and again, the city owns the lights. That's why we need to have control over those. So if we have a, another entity that controls our lights, we need to get them on a different frequency.
So are we then non-compliant right now? Since we're not in control of this?
So it's not technically, I don't know that it's a compliance issue. It's more of a safety issue of who we want to have in control of our license. Let's say that. The current operator doesn't renew the license and we lose our FCC frequency, our lights stop working. And then we have runway lights that we own and operate that don't function.
Mike, one more question on, on, oh, there's fifteen items listed here. Are these kind of in priority order, any priority order at all from a, from the aspect of a safety? Issue are the, do these have any priorities? So is number one with the beacon, number one priority based upon safety issues?
Correct, they are.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next is the AWAS, which is the Automated Weather Observing System. So this is basically their own weather station at, out at the airport. That gives them the conditions of the weather. So both when they're taking off and when they're landing, they know what they're dealing with, you know, if it's cold and they know that there could be some slippery. Pavement, wind, all those things that factor into the airport. It is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars just for that system out there. Next slide. The Pappy or Bassi, so Pappy is precision approach path indicators and Bass is visual approach slope indicators. There's not a huge difference between them. But basically, as you approach, the very left diagram kind of shows you, if you see white and white. It means that you're too high and you're going to overshoot the runway. If you see red over white, you're on the approach slope and you're doing good. And if you see red, red means you're too low and you're going to come in too fast and too hard. So again, that's just another way to make it safer to land out there. Again, this is the city of Marion's runway, and so anything that we can do out there to make it safer. So go on to, so this is a hundred and twenty thousand. Next is the observation parking lot, and so basically the. Outside of the RPZs next to Marion Airport Road on the southwest. And the east side, there's a couple of areas there that we can do, parking lots and observation areas. Obviously, when they have big events out there, gives an area for people to park. And then obviously, if you've been out there when they've done like the, the breakfast and the line of kids that want to get airplane rides and stuff like that. That they have a, a safe place that they can watch and carry on. So that's about eighty-five thousand dollars for that. Next slide. All right, so is there additional questions on those items?
Uh, there was one more item on the list that you didn't mention, and that is the wa- waterfall mitigation.
Yep, and so that one is one that there's. Yeah, there's no dollar amount on that one because basically you call the Department of Wildlife. And they come out and they do an evaluation on it, and then they give you some recommendations. So that one is one that's on there, but it's, there's not really a cost to it at this point. Because you're just using another agency that's willing to come out and do that evaluation.
I have a, one more question, Mike. Is anyone else who benefits from this, like the flight school or the plane owners? Is anyone else chipping in for any of this stuff or is this all on the city's back?
That would be depending on what we do with the lease agreement. Whether we want to charge them for any of this stuff, but these are just, again, the CIP projects that came forward from the municipal Marion Airport Committee.
And some of these, I would say, are good candidates for going in and applying for some funding from the DOT. And we did have a meeting with the current FBO provider out there yesterday morning, Renee. And they've got some information that I'll be visiting the city council about.
Okay, and so I think, you know, to help me, you know, when we get to a point of needing to vote on this. I would like to see what, what we're required to spend and what we're not. I, I, I personally don't feel like this airport is a good investment, and I don't want to spend a penny more than we need to on it. For reasons like the Uptown project we just discussed, I feel like we should be channeling a lot more energy there. Where we have a lot more ROI than what is happening out in the airport area. And this isn't news to anyone, so I'm not trying to shoot the messenger on any of this. I'm just trying to stay clear, so everyone knows where I stand on it. But this is a ton of money for, I don't see a lot of benefit to the general citizenry of Marion for this airport. So if it could be broken down by, you know, like the beacon versus the parking lot kind of thing. In terms of ordinances that require it. Versus what would be nice to, that would be helpful. Thanks.
Okay, so at this point, we have, at least Mike has presented a list of, at least as I added it up this morning, about two and a half million dollars. Of, in fact, it'll be higher than that once you get the land properly considered. But at this point, about a two and a half million dollars of proposed CIP or proposed projects. From the Marion Municipal Airport Committee to be considered as we evaluate our CIP projects. So that's where it stands. There's no decisions to be made about this. Obviously, if some of those come up during the CIP for the five-year plan, we will have more discussion with them at that time. Any more comments, questions as we discuss these tonight? Grant?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to just accentuate a couple of things that Mike brought up, and they were the basis of some questions. First off, as this was developed by the airport committee, it is a prioritized list at this point. So we need to keep that in mind. The other thing is it's been safety biased in terms of limiting liability for all parties involved. Relative to preventing mishaps from, or at the airport. One of the particular things that I think I, I want to just give a little bit of color commentary to is number four, the approach. The approach is an en- engineered flight path, as I think Mike alluded to. It's, it's something that is, is defined based on the environmental conditions surrounding the airport. Which includes any ground-based obstacles that need to be considered. And in that regard, the approach is a safety attribute for the airport. The way that works is most business-class airports have the GPS systems. That can be utilizing a reasonably high. Precision set of GPS signals to give them orientation to the runway. Whether that be on a lateral basis, right or left of runway center line, or whether that be altitude above the runway. And so what is ultimately designed utilizing that kind of a system. Is a glide path, if you will, or a flight path that brings an airplane under GPS guidance into. Into the, into the runway. So I think just from the standpoint of that opens up business-class. Landings into the airport is a positive beneficial impact that we should consider long-term. For the airport's existence. Right now, it's a hobbyist airport, but it has a runway that could perhaps support more than that. I think that if we have the approach defined, and if I recall, the number was approximately a hundred thousand dollars. And then there's some ongoing calibration of that year in and year out to make sure that it remains accurate and appropriate. Having an approach. And that information is published on aeronautical charts that can, all pilots can use. Is an inducement for non-local pilots to use the Marion Airport. The other thing that is integral to that is it'll allow, and I do, do think Mike said this. It'll allow us to be able to use the airport or pilots to use the airport in inclement weather conditions. It could be they want to fly to Monticello. It could be the, the conditions there are extremely bad. However, Marion might be the next best choice in order to have a, have a safe approach and landing. And then finally. Having that available and if that drives increased business utilization. That'll give us an increase in the number of deployments and aircraft operations. Which ultimately can factor favorably into an economic impact analysis. So besides just the safety attributes of an approach for safe aircraft landing and takeoff. I think there are some other tangential values there that we should consider as we look at our overall CIP.
Well, I think that brings up one other item we talked about in the past, and all of a sudden we're talking about, do we want to spend? We just spent two million dollars on the runway. Do we want to talk about another two and a half million dollars? And I think there was discussion in past meetings about an economic impact study on the airport. So I think for a lot of us, based on some of the past discussions we've had about the airport. A large investment is going to be difficult to be supported without seeing some basis for wanting to do that. Or what the impact and benefit will be. So we had that discussion, maybe we need to also tie that in at some point. If a lot of these are really going to be considered beyond some of the first handful that are smaller dollar items.
I'm going to chime in here a little bit. This is Randy. I've been. Pretty much sitting in on these meetings over the last couple of years now, and. I think what I, I was one of the advocates to get this before the council this evening, just to kind of share this information. Because it's getting to the point where the rest of the council needs to be brought up to speed a little bit as to. Some of the details that are going on out there, where we're currently at with that. Some of these items are going to be coming up on the CIP, so there's going to be further in-depth discussions about. You know, where does that lie? And I, I do want to put some. Emphasis on the priority that the committee has done a great job with. First of all, this committee is, has really been looking at this through the eyes of a lot of different lenses and trying to be objective with expenses. But yet, obviously. Very careful with understanding the operations of an airport. And so as this area kind of shifts and moves a little bit from Tom's realm over to Mike's realm. And we have some concerns such as like lighting, the beacon lighting, not only the. The landing lights that can be activated by the pilots, simple things like fencing. Driveways and approaches, making sure that we're keeping cars off of it. Yes, it is something regardless of where we all feel on this, we do own a runway at this point. So we do need to make sure that we're shoring up some protection on this. And whatever the future holds for this, but I think it's critical that we all just make sure we're looking at this as. Kind of a priority to make sure we're taking a look at some of these safety features, but nonetheless, it's going to be coming up for further discussion. With the CIP and the budget, obviously, moving forward here. But a few of these things are obviously very critical that I think is, is going to be important for the rest of the council to get kind of up to speed. On some of these items because they are very important. We put, you know, we put fencing around playgrounds at elementary schools. But yet we don't have one around an airport here that doesn't keep private passenger motor, motor vehicles from turning onto it. Onto the runway directly from a side road. So just some, I just wanted to kind of make sure we're bringing some clarity to some of this thing, this stuff. And I told Mike that I certainly would help support, obviously, the conversation around this and engaging the rest of the council on this. Because it's one of those things where I think there needs to be some discussions, just so everybody's on the same page with that. So, you know, wherever we feel that we need to be on that, I think it's important that we make sure that we are doing the, the right thing. Because somebody that's just traveling across the country and decides to land on that runway, they don't know our, our runway, and they don't know our circumstances. That's not their fault. It's, it's a runway. And by all practical purposes, it is open. So we want to make sure that we shore up a few of these things that we need to make sure we get taken care of. But nonetheless, I just wanted to make sure we, I spoke on that a little bit to, just so that we get some people engaged with some side conversations. To just try to queue it up a little bit on this as to where it's at. It certainly needs our undivided attention as we move forward with that, so that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, and we do thank Randy and, and Grant for their input tonight as well as in the future. Because they've been involved in the airport commission. And so again, a lot of us do not understand the importance, the magnitude and how challenging it is. And we do own part of that airport, we own the runway, and so it is something obviously we will continue to deal with in the future. All right, any more comments on this? If not, that is the last item, and we are adjourned for the evening. We'll see you on Thursday.